Well, I think we do need to go ahead and call a meeting order hopefully.
Here's Joe.
There's a fine for late arrival, you know.
Sorry, I'm right at close. It's right thirty of my watch. I ran out to the container homes.
Soon to be soon to be chairman, right?
Well, I don't know.
I did. I was doing research on the container homes that they're having open houses.
That's not on the agenda tonight.
Yeah, but they're open houses.
Call a meeting.
Six.
You've had access to the March thirty-one meeting minutes? Anything that we need to pop out there, question or correct? Then you wrote them, so I don't expect. If not, the chair will resume, but they're okay as printed in. Next to the agenda, you got two items of business on the agenda tonight plus a couple of routine things, anything that needs to be changed or corrected or added to the agenda. Not thank you. Or to the public comment section of this, which is though not on the ordinary meeting night, our our regular meeting for the month of April. If anybody from the public has a comment on anything that's not on the agenda, feel free to do so now, but please identify yourself. If anybody wants to speak on any other matter. Hearing no public comments, we'll move on to business. Z twenty-two zero four MB loan fund. Anybody here to speak to that item?
My name is Dan Garber. I'm just Garber surveying in Hutchinson.
Hi, David.
Representing Menonite Brother and Loan Fund.
Wait.
And their offices are there on D and Washington, South Washington. And so they've purchased the next house to the north. They had already removed several houses and we did a zone change a few years ago when they built their new building. And now they are, they bought four oh six South Washington. I think the house has already been moved off. And so we need to change the zoning from R two to CS. And our application said C two. We thought that would be C two because it was next to the residential, but it's part of the CS property that fronts down on the highway. So agreement that it needs to be changed to the CS zone. That would be the south twenty-five feet of lot three and all of lot four, block four in reasons addition. And they are adding on to the north side of their building, their office facility, and then there will be a parking, parking and driveway to the north of that addition. So it'll go right up to your north property line with an entrance in from Washington Street and an exit out to the alley. Property line with an entrance in from Washington Street and an exit out to the alley. You can see on that that they they paved the alley when they built their building. Just to the east of the building there, you see the concrete alley. The city has suggested it'd be really nice to have the next phase of the alley paved. And I relayed that message to them and they have agreed to pave the alley. So we're planning a concrete extension there up to their north property line.
Okay, thank you for that explanation.
So how far, Dan, how do you, have they determined how big the building extension will be as far as? I don't know that we've seen a.
I have a set of plans. I can lay on the table if you want. These are, these are preliminary. We're, we're doing it for Sheldon Architecture. But this is the building that was built with the parking lot north is that way. Here's the proposed building addition. And then parking here and over here driveway and dumpster there and the driveway will come down and exit out.
Okay, so it's an L shape.
So this blue area is the new concrete alley. Anybody have any questions?
Okay, thank you. Any comments from city staff before we open it up beyond?
I don't believe we have any objections to this zoning. It's consistent with what's in the CS zoning district, which is the highway service district, kind of a leftover from when that was fifty-six. You know, we've done the rezone across the street recently on the four fifteen South Washington property. So this is all very consistent with that. And we have no objections. Obviously, that residence has been moved and presumably the garage and the I'm going to call it an accessory building in the back.
That used to be my house.
Oh, really? Okay, cool.
That was my first house I lived in.
There you go.
It's like the garage is ready to be moved.
Yeah. Kind of up on a trailer thing or any. Sure, we can put that as the Arthur home.
Yeah, it's a hundred and fifty dollars a month.
Uh, so there, there's no objections from us.
Okay, thank you. Okay, open it up to anybody else and that has a comment or question on the matter. And then we'll move on toward a vote after that's all. If anybody has anything to say or ask.
Has anyone talked to the duplexes that are right there? Anybody that lives on those or?
Yeah, they were sending notification. I haven't had, I haven't had any conversation with them. No one's raised any complaints or issues from anyone around there.
Okay, any other questions? If not, the chair will entertain a motion as to the disposition of the request.
A move that we approve the request as indicated.
Come into the council.
Yes.
Right.
And we have a second. Okay, one more chance for comments or questions? All in favor, say aye. Opposed, no. Motion has carried. Thank you.
When, when will that go to city council?
Uh, it will go unfortunately the way that means are timed out. It won't go until the second of May. Yeah, okay, any second.
Is that what time of the day?
Uh, six thirty PM.
Okay, great.
And I don't know that you'll need a appearance there. I think generally speaking, I know, generally speaking, any zoning changes has gone through without much. Perceive this being particularly contentious.
Thank you very much for your time.
Obviously, the council recognizes their honest with which we process things here and they know that it's all okay then.
Yeah, generally speaking, they never.
It's like Ken taking my motion.
Thank you. We'll move on into Z N K Z dash twenty-two zero five Tabor College Alley Vacation Request. Tabor College is wanting a vacation. Go ahead.
Get her summer off. But we're, we're working on plans to build a new dormitory just to the south of the Dakota parking lot there. In order to get it to fit into the space there, we have to put it right up against the alley, which means we need to drop the power lines, run them underground. And so in order to do that, we need to run those down the alley. And that would also allow us then to run park sidewalks across and connect with the other sidewalks that that run through campus. Eventually, then the rest of the alley that would become green space, we would plow that and plant it. And that would become a quiet area for the students.
And so this, um, just to kind of back up a second and talk about how alley vacations work. In order to vacate an alleyway, you have to have a, well, the city can initiate that or individual landowners can do so if they have permission from fifty-one percent of the ownership that is adjacent to the alleyway. In this case, Tabor owns all the property except for, uh, what is your guys' that is one oh eight?
Five oh eight.
Five oh eight, sorry, I can't read that. Five oh eight C Street. And so, um, you know, Tabor, of course, has sent that petition in there in order to do that. And so if this were to move forward, what ends up happening, uh, in this case, they would, we would just be vacating the alleyway. We would still maintain an easement because we would have electrical lines as, as Michael says. Uh, and I believe gas line runs through the team.
I think so.
Yeah. Uh, so the easements remain in the same. Uh, what happens is that the alleyway basically gets divided down the center. And then the adjacent property owners receive that property back. So it basically extends their property. Um, and so Tabor would of course be the beneficiary of most of that, but then the Funks also would receive uh, half of the alleyway there. So, uh, from that perspective, you'd still have access to you as what is effectively the alleyway as your own property at that point. So that's kind of how it works. If, you know, the planning commission has to have the public hearing, which we're doing now, obviously. And then, uh, it would move forward to the city council as a vacation ordinance. So that's how that, that's how that process works. A little bit different than what we normally do.
Thanks for the explanation.
How much, how wide is that or what kind of, I mean, disapproximate?
Twenty feet wide.
Twenty feet. So each adjacent property owner would get ten feet essentially added to their lot.
Is it really that wide?
The valley, the designated alleyway is now.
The actual right.
Actual.
The actual alley.
Alley is probably not, yeah.
There's not twenty feet of gravel there.
Not twenty foot there, no, typically not. That's probably going to be eight feet.
The actual right away is twenty. Any other comments from city staff and then we'll open it up to.
Well, I wanted to add to what Mr. James had said about the, one of the other benefits of vacating the alley is for setbacks. You know, in, in their, in their desire to put the new dormitories there, then they now, if they have a property line there to deal with, which the, the right away line would be a property line, then they would have setbacks that they would have to adhere to for that building. And this eliminates that requirement for setbacks. And so they have more freedom to put the building where they desire, buildings where they desire on those lots.
So the first proposed dormitory is right here. Basically, uh, like, man, I'm, I'm a hard time reading this at South five oh five South Adams. Would be kind of where that first one is. And I don't know, Michael, if you want to talk about the long-term vision for that is multiple dormitories.
It is, um, it's changing already.
Gotcha.
It was originally going to be three on the, on the east side, one across the alley on the west side. We're already down to two on the east side. So, uh, in order to get enough spacing.
So like this is no longer accurate.
That's great. Yeah, they didn't fit. When the architects got, got a hold of them, the big buildings got bigger and they wouldn't fit on there. The only one that's in, the only one that's foreseen right now is, is this one right here. And it will actually go all the way across about like that. So.
So it's going to be running, uh, east and west.
East west, yes.
They just done the south side of that parking lot.
Correct. And it'll be right up against the parking lot, five feet for the parking lot. And then, um, the door will be on the south side. So the students will enter from the south side and the end of the door. Be a two-story dorm with a basement.
Okay, other comments or questions? Anybody public or?
Well, from our, our perspective, I guess we just would like to know a little bit more about how that's going to be because there is a natural waterway that runs from actually like where Tabor has a water bridge and a dry river that it kind of floods there. It goes behind what used to be the Penner's house. And there's a, they've actually, there's a low spot in the alley. And then it runs, it's supposed to run all the way behind our house and then on Adams Street. When they built, when they built the new sidewalk and stuff, they actually have a cutout there for the water, which is supposed to drain out that way. And it really doesn't. It ends up kind of
puddling right through the alley.
And, and all along there. And so I guess I have some concerns of what abandoning the alley and how that's all going to work, what Tabor's plan is for that. And then we just also want to make sure that we have access to our side yard and to our backyard for the purpose of actually even moving things out of our basement. When it comes time to move, we weren't sure how.
We have a gate. Our backyard has a gate that goes to the alley.
Our side yard.
Yeah, our side.
Which is, you know, adjacent to the alley. And so, and then the other thing that we struggle with is, is parking. And, um, people are always parking where they're not supposed to and illegally. And so we struggle with even where to put our trash. So right now, the trash, David, the trash.
I've been putting the alley.
We, he, we put it in the alley because all those other houses along there put their trash in the alley because the arm doesn't work. So if we put it in front of our house, the trash truck can't actually.
If there's car, you don't.
Get to us.
Cars, yeah.
Right. So we, we, there's just a few logistics that we struggle with based on where we're at. We realize at some point we will be selling our house to Tabor. But we have no immediate plans of doing that. Um, like our timeframe has a lot more to do with that, the length of my mom's life. And, uh, as long as she's living, we'll be living there. And so after that, we're not sure what our plans are.
Where are you, where are you on the map?
Right here.
Yeah, we're right there.
Okay, down there.
So does that make sense what they said about the, that you'll receive that ten feet? Did you know about that or?
I, we didn't, we didn't. And, and that could be helpful. The only thing is I'm not sure what that does to like with our electricity because everything is running overhead. Now, like, what does that mean for, for us?
Because you guys were talking about putting everything underground. And I'll, I'll let Matt speak to that part.
Yeah, so this is a, what'll end up happening and there, the other issue is not, not just your house. Cause your house could be fed from any underground source because it's going to come straight down where it is. But one of the other issues we have is that line, overhead line goes toward the back of your property and then comes over to here and then across the street. So we're actually feeding people over here off of this line, which comes down through here. Um, so we're going to have to make some adjustments to that. Um, as far as what your property is, uh, you, you'll be fed off the same line that's going underground. So from that perspective, you won't have to worry about it. Overhead line, which is better from some, in some ways. A little harder to get to, but it's also harder for ice and animals to get to as well.
So like, there's a pole, like an electrical pole that's on the five oh six EC property, like right when you enter the alley.
Right here.
So that will also be gone.
Yeah, all that'll go underground.
Well, that's a light pole too, isn't it?
If they're, well, if they've got a light pole there, then it'll end up being serviced off that underground feed and the light will stay there. But, um, you know, this, the plan, at least as I know it now, is to terminate this as part of that project and, and take their services back over here because we think we can pick them up over on that side. So there'll be a little bit of an adjustment there, but we'll, you know, we, we will maintain the, um, utility easements through there. So all that, you know, the service from your end as an end user shouldn't change too much how we get it there will. But it'll all remain in that alleyway.
So when you say we're going to get like ten extra feet, you know, this could split the twenty, where do they measure that from the center of the gravel part of the alley?
From your property line. Because the, the, the right away is from the, from your property, from your west property line, from the old Penner place is east property line. And then what's in between that is that twenty-foot right away. So from your west property line, you'll gain ten feet to the west.
And do we have little stakes in there that show that or?
There probably are. I mean, I could, I could see if I could find them. There, there oftentimes are pins in the ground. Um, and if there are, then we can measure off of them and we know for sure. If there's not, then maybe we can find some pins somewhere in the area that we can measure from. So, yeah, we can, we can try to find out exactly what that would look like.
Well, that would be good to know because it would maybe like for us, like if, if that would be the case, maybe Tabor would be generous and, and give us a little bit of theirs. So we could park our truck in that space so that we could put our trash in the front of our house. Yeah, I mean, I don't know. I'm just.
I'll tell you from a, from a practical standpoint, this project is not going to do anything at that end of the alley. So the alley will be there. We're, we're not planning on doing anything with it. It'll be just as it is. So the only, we're only going to do work up in here. Enough to run apart a sidewalk straight over here and connect in here. Uh, I think they're planning on dropping the transformer in the middle of the alley. So this part of the alley will go away, but from here on down, it's going to be pretty much.
So if they would be to park our truck there for instance.
We could work that out.
Yeah, because it would be your private property. So they, with permission, they could then park it.
Because otherwise I don't see where like trash can be picked up and recyclables.
Well, we had talked about trash. Uh, Matt, did you guys ever come up with a plan?
I don't know that we got a great plan yet. But we are going to be taking, um, we'll still kind of utilize that alley at, at this point, pick up Dakota and the new dorm there, that way. Uh, we were planning on looking at moving you guys to the front. So we would have to figure out what we would need to do with that, if that's additional signage for no parking or.
But that doesn't work.
Yes, signs don't.
Yeah, it really worked.
I can start writing tickets, but it's sort of a pain in the butt. It's nice when I could write the ticket for the vehicle, but now I have to find the registered owner and I'm writing the ticket to probably someone's parent who's out of state.
And they get really angry.
And well, it's, it's, it's a mess. It doesn't really solve the problem.
But we also have Tabor's maintenance who parks right behind our drive where it says no parking. There's a no parking sign. So the issue isn't even just directly in front of our house. It's the whole street.
Yeah, right across our street along the, the.
And he assures us.
Like along the, the south edge of East C, you know, it's a fire lane.
But he assures me that if the fire trucks need to come through, they will barrel through.
They have to though.
But, you know, you think for fire trucks and ambulance or whatever. It's like with, by the time we have our vehicles parked on the street and then when people are parked opposite, there's just.
Yeah.
They seem to like to park right directly behind our driveways when we're backing out. You know, we can back out, but we always have to watch because or.
We now have a camera and so the goal is to get as close as possible to them to make them very nervous. So they will think twice about parking there again. That's, that's what we do now. But, but so that's kind of, we, we want, we want Tabor to move forward. We were very supportive of what they're doing. It's just, we don't want it to be at our, our cost or our daily living. At this point.
Are you adding parking at the dorms?
We are. So Cedar Hall to the north of Dakota parking lot, as part of this project is coming down. And that's going to be a new parking lot.
But that's a whole hundred and fifty feet away from the, the door. They don't park that far away, do they?
Not generally. But the Dakota parking lot's not usually full either. So.
Yeah, that's true.
On a comment on your parking tickets, first off, thank you because when you weren't doing it, I was the one putting the tickets on their cars. So thank you for that. But it does work because I've had students who said, yeah, I got a ticket, so I don't park there anymore.
Yeah.
So it does work.
It's almost easier for us to put our, our yellow, our green sticker and I stick it right in the middle of the.
But that only works. You know, like you're not, he's not going to be doing that.
Yeah.
Off, off duty. I mean, we don't want to be jerks.
You mean at night when they're in there doing it? When they're parked there at night? Yeah.
Well, you know, it's, it's actually can be all hours of the day and night. And, and you know, they, some park for five minutes and some park for hours and they just.
Overnight, they think they're going to be gone before the people get there next morning.
I mean, it's, it, it's, it's a little bit of an issue. I mean, especially, I don't think there's enough parking for the townhouses. And, and again, they want to park as close to the door as possible. But, I mean, we want to be good neighbors. We've tried very hard throughout the years. It's just.
I need to find out. We've talked about putting parking down, um, well, that's not on this picture. Down on Adams, behind the townhouses. We're still debating that whether we thought we were all set to put gravel lots in there. And the two empty properties we own and then.
Oh, the east side of Adam.
Yeah. And then someone had the bright idea, well, gravel looks so bad, let's pave them. So, well, that's a lot more cost and we can raise the money. Uh, raising money for a door. So we're stuck in that limbo now. I think we're going to, we're going to do something when the, when the new maintenance facility goes up.
That's what's being built there.
Yeah, then we're going to put some, whether it be paved or rocked, we're going to put something in front of that. That will be additional student parking. So that may help. Hope that will help the town.
Zoned for education or whatever we did.
They are all CS on that side.
S one.
Yeah, S one. And of course, we just did the zoning case on the other side of the street with maintenance building.
There will be more. That'll need to be changed.
What you said, it sounded like there's still quite a few to go.
Yeah, I think the main, the main campus, kind of the contained area there between Adams and, uh, Lincoln is pretty well correctly zoned. It's just when you get outside of that, that is.
There's a Madison U car there, front of the house.
Between that.
We've got.
Where that little white car is.
We've got two, two vehicles plus police car, right?
We have one that's in the street and then one that's in.
A driveway and then the police.
Two personal vehicles and a police car.
Yeah. And then like if our son comes to visit.
Right.
There is available space for two vehicles to park in front of our house.
Right.
But oftentimes, I mean, other.
Yeah, oftentimes there'll be someone will park in the front of one of them. And park in front of our truck because they're going to the business class or business building or something.
It would appear that the obvious solution is if they would be on duty twenty-four seven, he could write tickets anytime then.
The thing is, it's, it says auth or says what residential parking.
No, it says authorized, it says authorized vehicles.
What is considered authorized?
Yeah.
You know? And then the other one says police car parking.
And that actually you would think people wouldn't park there, but no, that's not the case either.
They're changing it to residential parking only wouldn't help.
But they're in their residence.
They think the residence.
See, and we, we, you know.
We put up delivery parking only signs and they park there. If I was just to deliver a package to the professor.
Well, and, and it's not only the students.
We should only offer prelong.
Like we had Professor's husband try to do that this fall and I said, you need, I, we had just come home and he was coming home with the other vehicle and I said, I'm sorry, I need you to move. And, and he was like, well, I'm just going to be here for a little while. And it's like, well, no, you don't understand. My husband is coming right behind me and that's where he parks. So, you know, I mean, it's, it's, we understand because it's, you know, people that live by the school at game nights and stuff. People, I mean, that's just part of it. But it's, it's.
Yeah, it can be. So what were you saying? It would be helpful in the alley?
Well, I mean, I'm just, if we could even, like, I guess if we had to, we, if we parked the truck in the alley, then we would be able to put our trash.
Like another parking spot on the other side of our.
We, we could potentially do that, but you know, I guess it's considered okay because it's on a gravel at this point in time. And we wouldn't be necessarily ding for.
Right now, it's a right away.
Right, but I mean, if this all.
But I mean, when it gets closed off of the gravel.
It would be your problem.
It'll be private property then, so.
Right, but I mean, like if the, if the grass starts going over then.
Yeah, there's, there's an obscure code that says you can't park on the lawn, but I don't know that that's.
Then that's going to be enforced.
Forced.
Probably, I don't know, probably right there.
Try and talk to the police department about that.
Well, the former, uh, former mayor, it was a big deal.
She had me enforcing it, even though it was a traffic issue. I was like.
So we, we, and I want to sit down with you. We'll put something in writing for that. That's fine. That, that's not a big deal.
So on that street, I know that there's like only two spots over on Adams, like in front of your house, Ben. That whole road, they said no parking. Could that whole road just be turned into no parking? Because now you could actually go into the alley as part of your parking. And so then the students couldn't, there wouldn't be any parking there except for the things that go in.
That would be then nobody would be able to come and visit us. So because there, you're not really supposed to park. If somebody pulled in behind our vehicle in the driveway, it blocks the right of the sidewalk. And sometimes somebody pulls in with a patrol car that way. And we've actually gotten a nasty letter from somebody in the community about his patrol car blocking the sidewalk. And I don't know if that's a disability thing or, or what. I, do you know?
I mean, if no parking and they're parking there, people think, well, it doesn't really matter.
I know. So that, but that if they got that parking in the other side and then that would clear out the street so that they could actually dump the trash. And so there would just be no parking over there.
I would potentially be okay.
Would be the spot for the police car.
But we, yeah, we don't. Unless Tabor would be kind enough to give us the house next door. They have a driveway, but right now they store chairs in that garage of, on the house. And so they're not. And so they're not, nobody's supposed to park in that driveway, um, because students aren't. So they can access the.
Well, and I'm, I'm trying to get students out of there so we can go back to putting, you know, new faculty and things in there. So, um.
So the, they would also need, if, if new faculty were living there, then they would also.
They would park from the driveway.
Some of the storage might be cleaned up with the new maintenance area. So they could clean out maybe that garage.
Essentially.
Could open up.
I had. I'd be okay with the street going, no parking, but that doesn't solve the problem, I don't think.
Yeah. Cause then you can't park there either.
Yeah.
Okay. Good discussion. Thank you all, but we'll not close it off quite yet. We will move shortly to asking for a motion. One more chance. Okay. Chair would entertain a motion then as to the disposition of the request. Who wants to get their name in the minutes?
The vacation alley as presented.
Okay. Is there a second?
One second.
Okay. We have a second. One more chance. Any comment before we vote?
Let me just ask this, uh, regardless of what we approve or not approve here, it's not, doesn't sound to me like it's going to be a lot better or worse either way.
It's coming. We know that. So we're, we're okay with that. We just had made sure that.
Well, we just were, in my, our concern was what was like with our electrical, the waterway.
I'm sure Tabor will hopefully get that.
Well, when we do something. Now, I wasn't aware there's a drainage problem, but.
I mean.
Nothing we're doing right now is going to change that for the.
And those were our concerns. We didn't really know what vacating the alley meant.
Cause like, yeah, like. The door side of our property, like right here is where there's a low spot in the alley. And it's, it's sort of like a big washed out area. So when we have heavy rain, it all sort of comes through here like a natural waterway. And that sort of washes out. And I'm sure, you know, if we can get some sort of, I don't know, landscaping or something so that it just doesn't turn into a big bog there.
Well, yeah, the good news there is that if, if the valley was vacated, then it would be, you could, you could chain it however you needed to. Yeah, they could. I mean, that, that would be.
Then it's our property and we can do what we want. Now we have to work.
Yeah, work with us.
Yeah. And so those are our concerns. So we're not opposed to the alley being vacant. We just want to make sure we have access to our yard. We have a place to park our, our truck. And what did that mean for trash pickup?
Yeah.
And if we can work something out, we're very amicable to that.
And I'm all, most of us, I think, are, can speak for everyone else. Like most of us are in favor of helping Tabor when we can within reason. I just want to make sure that helping wasn't necessarily adding another layer of problems, just that.
No, I, I think.
Comparable. I mean, it's just a matter of working together on making.
Yeah.
Yeah. And I think we're, and I think we're for that. And I, we're, we're excited for what Tabor has, has planned. And we don't mean to be the, the wrench in the thing, but it's, but at this point it's not beneficial for our life.
Alright.
To, to settle to Tabor at this point. So that's where we're at.
And we're not ready to do anything with it anyway.
And so we're, we're.
I like our house and the way the housing market is. It's.
Yeah.
Yeah. You know.
Well, and at some point, like all of our, like the sewer line and all that stuff for the house, uh, for the Penner's house and for our house. And I believe the house on the corner, that all runs back behind, actually behind the fence at our house.
Like where that waterway is.
Where that waterway is. It actually.
It all tied together.
They, they're not all tied together, but they were, they had been when they were originally built.
Right.
And then at one point, the former owners of our house and the former owners of the one to the west, they put in separate lines, but they are in the same.
In the same trench. Gotcha.
And it's, they had to get the approval of, I think Orlando Schultz was the homeowner of the house back there at that time. So that all runs back there. So just, you know, that's kind of a concern for whatever goes forward.
Yeah.
But no, we, we're, we're, we're totally supportive of, of that. Just as long as our life doesn't become more.
Yeah, more. Is already is. And I mean, it's going to be a challenge no matter what parking, I'm sure, just because of what we've, what you've.
I mean, you're nestled right in the center of Tabor.
Yeah.
You know, during COVID, it was wonderful.
Christmas break.
Yeah. So no, we, we, you know, we fully expect that at some point Tabor will own, you know, our property as well. But it's, yeah.
So with this, it does look like you will get another parking spot because you can go beside your house where the alley is.
That would be good for us if.
So if you have company.
Tabor's okay with us parking on their portion of the 10 feet.
And like I said.
Along the road though too.
Oh, or along the road. Yeah, I guess.
We'll, we'll get together before I leave so we can put in writing. So the next guy doesn't change his mind.
That could happen, right?
Yeah. Good, thanks.
Okay. I'll call for the vote. All in favor, aye. Opposed, no. Motion has carried. Thank you. Thank you all for being involved in the discussion here. City administrators report.
I just wanted to give you an update on our last meeting, which was only a couple of weeks ago. Uh, but the April 5th council meeting, they did approve, uh, extending the moratorium on shipping container homes until we finish our process with the overlay district for alternative housing. So, uh, we didn't put a date on it. Um, in the event that something should change or we need to change day or something. So uh, that moratorium will follow this process all the way through. So I think that's, I think that's for the best here. Um, got some upcoming business on the May agenda. We'll have a conditional use permit for Airbnb or a short-term rental. Uh, and we're also going to put that agricultural exemption language back on. So we'll get that finally handled. And then, uh, we're kind of targeting May also to start with the comprehensive plan, uh, reviewing that. It's a long process. I can tell you that. Um, but we'll kind of talk about what's in there and, and what needs to be adjusted and where we need to start. So we'll begin that in May, but I think that'll be a year long kind of thing. It takes, takes a while. So I just wanted to give you a heads up that that's coming too. And that is all I had for you unless you have a question.
The wording for that. The zoning that we were doing for the, do we get new wording on that yet? You were going to go to.
Oh, yes, I did. I got that and I will send that out to everybody. Yeah. About the, uh, enclosed foundations. Yeah. We got that fixed.
And the agriculture exemption, or how many acres are you going to go with?
Uh, that will be kind of to be determined. I think we, I, I have to go back and look at the minutes of what we talked about, but I know you guys brought up an issue, you and Jesse brought up an issue, maybe it needs to be a different size. So.
I just know our backyard.
Yeah.
I don't know how many acres back there, but I really don't want animals back there.
No, they don't want cattle back there. I get it. So yeah, we can.
I don't want to be on the board just for that, you know, just.
Sure.
But I still don't understand why we have to change it. Cause when Gary brings up the point, well, if a developer wants to develop, well, I brought up what, with Tabor when they or MB tore the building down, they did it before all this was zoned. And he said, well, that's at the developer's risk of us turning them down. Why can't that be at the developer's risk?
Sure could be. That would be a, that would be an option too.
Okay. Thank you. And our next meeting is, should we, two weeks, right?
April 28th for that public hearing.
Okay. There is one complication. I'm on vacation that week. So.
Me too.
Who's in charge?
It's Jesse.
Is it Jesse? Jesse's.
I believe Jesse. Vice chair. And we did look at that too, by the way, Ken. So, uh, there weren't any terms on the chairman and vice chair when they were voted. But you can certainly call for that as the chairman. That would be your prerogative to do that. So if you wanted to do that, you sure can. Um, June would be the two-year mark.
Do we not also have some vacancies on the?
We do. We do. We have a, an out of town vacancy and an in-town vacancy. So, uh, we, we have.
Need to push the mayor's arm a little bit or what?
Well, it's, it's, it's been tough getting people to volunteer.
Well, I know Joe was real, real happy to join, but I'm, most people wouldn't be.
I was retiring. I'll do it. I'll try it. There's nothing major coming up.
We do need, we do have two spots that need to be filled.
Yes, right. Well.
I did talk to one person about this, that opposed the container homes. It said, well, we have an opening on the land commission. Well, I don't want to do that. Is that, did everyone go to the open house today? It was interesting. I found it interesting. I got to walk in all three of them. And one's going to be that, what's it called? The Mr. So-and-so who's at the meeting. He, uh, walked me through all three and, uh, one of them's going to be, I guess, reserved tomorrow night or something, first time or whatever.
Okay. Yeah.
And I think it's $55 a night. I thought, that's not bad. And they're really, to me, it looked pretty nice inside. I mean.
How did it look compared to what they showed us?
I mean, the difference is these were all individual, not the ones they were talking about putting two together. So to me, it would be, it'd be very difficult to live in there because you have no place to put clothes. But for overnight.
Yeah.
No problem. Yeah, actually. Yes. One of them had two bedrooms. Kind of a kitchen type area, bathroom, shower.
Can we somehow let? One last chance.
Have a good vacation. Where are you going? Or don't you tell us?
Taking a prudent tour to Ark and County and Creation Museum.
Okay. Yeah. Those are, that's cool. I've been there. That's a nice place. Thank you. Enjoy it. Have a good one.
Meeting is adjourned.
Okay. Thanks guys. Appreciate it.